Natural Resource Committee meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you do a roll call? Yes, I will. Good afternoon, we'll do roll call in council chambers first to this meeting. I have on my right Councilman York Glover is present, myself, Alice Howard, and to my left is Chairman Joe Passamit. And online we have, if you will identify yourself, I will call you out, Councilman Somerville. Councilman Cunningham is here, and I think that's it.
Yeah, Mr. McGowan.
Is he on?
Yes.
Yes, there he is.
Okay, thank you, Councilman McLellan, same people that were earlier. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. That's correct, Ms. Brock?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, I would like to move the agenda as presented.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilman McGowan, second. Without objection, the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from March 7, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I will make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
A second from Councilman McGowan. No objections or changes? Minutes from March 7, 2022 are approved. Do we have any citizen comments?
None, ma'am.
None, okay. All right, number seven on the agenda is a regional stormwater update, and Mr. Sigh's going to do that?
I'm Chairman and Council again. So just to quickly go over a couple of updates for stormwater and the projects that we have kind of online right now, the Brewin Memorial Construction Project, which is on Ladies Island, right at the foot of the bridge, or a little bit past the foot of the bridge, construction continues, and it looks like we are online. The main connection from the street to the park has been established, and the contractor's working on the layout and stabilizing the final lot. Looks like we're on schedule for that one. The next one, Evergreen Regional Pond, is the pond that's the, right past the 278 interchange on 170 before you get to 46. This is a 319 grant project, and DOT has finally approved an amendment to a utility conflict. Looks like we're going to be on track to complete about mid-May, which will be in line as the grant finishes up end of July, so we're on track.
May of 2022, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Next one is the St. Helena Drainage Project. Our consultant has completed all the fieldwork, and we're working on now the model itself. Staff is meeting with the consultant this week to go over some changes and/or comments and how to formulate that model and to finalize it. All the fieldwork and the related efforts going to be completed prior to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. Mr. Councilman Glover, you have any questions about that one?
No, no.
Okay, all right.
All right. Next one is the Arthur Horn Park. So staff has submitted application for a 319 grant for this one. It's currently in the approval process, and we are currently looking at plans to improve the drainage for this area, but also the water quality that's eventually going into the park. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we get the grant and we can proceed. Next one is the Ladies Island Drainage Study. Our consultant has begun all the fieldwork with this project. The first three weeks have been fieldwork that's associated with mapping all the system as well as surveying. The next portion will be completed prior, basically staff will then take the data, data that's in place, and then staff, work with staff to kind of finalize it. We're on track to finish this prior to the end of the fiscal year as well. And then finally, just a couple of items. We're following all with the citizens' request from the March 28 County Council meeting, addressing some of the drainage concerns as applicable as they came in through from that meeting.
Okay, we have any questions from council members or others online? I don't see anybody's hand raised, okay. Appreciate the report, and I'd like to make a plug for the meeting in the Shellpoint area for the update for stormwater there, which will be at 6 o'clock at Shellpoint Baptist Church. Look forward to that, too. Thank you. Okay. Oh, somebody online has their hand up. Can you see that, Sarah? We may have a question for you. Thank you.
See what we need to amend the agenda?
Agenda, okay. Can you see them?
There may be a mine more.
If you, if anyone was online with their hand up, please get back to us. We also need to go back and amend the agenda, Council Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Glover had sent a stormwater appointment, is that correct?
I don't think it got in. Did it get in on time?
We verified it, you just need to amend the agenda to...
Oh, great, okay.
Oh, okay.
Well, let's do that before we go through the rest of the agenda.
Would you?
Okay, Councilman Glover, would you like to make an amendment to the agenda to appoint an individual?
Yes, I, oh, we'd like to amend the agenda to a nominee for the...
Oh, wait, Tom hasn't come in.
Well, I just have a question. I mean, you've already approved the agenda.
We already did the agenda approval.
If there's no urgency to it, I would just recommend that you save it for the next meeting.
Is it because it's on your board? Is it an urgency?
It's not final action, I don't know. I mean, it'll still go to council.
It's not final action, but this committee has already approved its agenda.
Is there, is there any urgency to doing the appointment in this NRC meeting? Is there a vacant seat or something that...
There's a vacancy, but is it an emergency?
Somebody that we worked Friday afternoon to get approved, but we didn't get everything worked out, so...
Does it, could it go directly to the full council?
Sometimes it's better to just pause and wait, and I'll, I'll listen, I'll lean to legal, and we'll get it on the next time.
Okay, the next...
Thank you.
I guess, could it?
Yeah, we can do it, we can do it for public facilities.
Could we do that at public facilities?
We can, yeah. We just have to talk to the chairman about that. We can put it on there and get it to council as soon as possible, so it'll be done in April.
I'm glad we got a name of someone, because we do have that vacant seat.
I tried to get it on Friday, but didn't have enough time, but I didn't realize, okay.
Okay, moving along now to the next item is number eight, recommend approval of stormwater utility memorandum of agreement with the city of Ufert for MS4 Public Education Services in the total amount of $4,491. Yes, sir.
Yep, so that's our standard agreement that we have with Carolina Clear that we enter with all the municipalities. They're all based on the amount of stormwater accounts in their respective area, and that's the breakdown.
And it's a percentage.
Yeah, the next three other items are very similar.
Okay, let me read the others, and then we'll open it up for questions, in case. Number nine is recommend approval of the stormwater utility MOA with the town of Port Royal for an amount of $2,898. And number 10 is recommend approval of the stormwater utility memorandum of agreement MOA with the town of Bluffton for $10,962. And number 11 is approval of the stormwater MOA with the town of Hilton Head for $26,829. Could you give us a brief summary of what that, what, I know they do a great job, but how, how they educate the public as part of the MS4 permit?
So, two of the six components in the MS4 program are a public education, kind of an outreach program. We work extensively with Carolina Clear, who's, which is a program that's an offshoot of, of the extension, that particularly focuses on stormwater education. What they do is the agent then comes and helps with all of our education materials as they get dispersed through the schools, but they also come and attend any of the local events or festivals and things of that nature. We also put out a campaign either through billboards or other printed material to try to reach out and some of outreach. We also kind of schedule creek sweeps and things of that nature, very similar to what they do for highway sweeps and whatnot. So it's a vast array of things that, that try to get the word out about making sure that to enhance and protect the waters of this area.
And that's a requirement of our stormwater permit, too?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am, it's two of the six requirements, and so we contract out with Clemson Extension.
Anybody online or council members have questions about these, these four MOAs?
They do pond management, too?
Yep, they threw that class on and, and conduct that class as well as part of their educational series with the master gardeners and whatnot, and they provide it all throughout the state.
Chairman, I'll make the motion for those MOs with those municipalities be approved.
Okay, can we do all four at the same time?
Yes, yes, I mean, can we?
You can.
Yes, yes, that's my motion to include all four.
All right, do I have a second?
I will make the second.
With no objections, all four will be approved, and this can, this is at the committee level, I think, we don't, or does it have to, no, it has to go full county?
It's for recommendation to council.
Right, okay, full council. All right, thank you, that's great. All right, the next thing is number 12, recommendation for contract award for Whitehall Park, Whitehall Park Phase 1 construction, 030122. Ms. Nagy's going to tell us about that, thank you.
Good afternoon. So we completed the conceptual plan for Whitehall Park in December 2020, which I presented to this committee and full council in early 2021. During the 2021 calendar year, Wooden Partners and county staff finalized the first phase of the construction plans. So that includes the entrance, the parking lot, the multi-use trail that connects the causeway, and the recently completed boardwalk project down through to the adjacent neighbors' development, picnic pavilion, and restrooms. What it does not include is a dock and pier observation platform and some various other small amenities. So we decided to try and go out for bid and see how much all that would cost. We had an engineer's estimate, and we received two bids, and Nick's Construction is the apparent low bidder at $1,537,000. We also wanted to accept their alternate bid price for a pervious concrete drive aisle instead of a gravel drive aisle, which would add $135,000 to that project cost, and that is more for a maintenance issue. A gravel drive aisle is a little bit harder to maintain to keep the turning radiuses smooth, so pervious concrete is the preferred choice, but we weren't sure quite how much that would cost. And then there is a 15% contingency that we'd like to add to this project due to the amount of the project cost. We felt 15% was a better percentage than 10%, and so that would add another $250,800 to that cost. So the total project cost would be $1,922,800. This is almost twice what we anticipated. So because of that, we did have funding available. There's $426,828 currently available in the Whitehall Park capital account that was allocated by county council some time ago. Because of our engineer's estimate and what I had available, I applied for an A and H tax grant for the amount of $560,478, and that was approved by county council on March 28th, so I'm anticipating that amount. That leaves a shortfall of $935,000 and some change. I currently have available in the Oakatee Marsh account for fiscal year '22, a million dollars that was allocated by county council again some time ago. Due to other project priorities, this project being a major priority for the citizens of the county as well as council in previous discussions, I would like to reallocate the shortfall amount from the Oakatee Marsh project to the Whitehall Park, Park project. I could still have funding available in Oakatee Marsh to do a conceptual plan next fiscal year, but also because of the timber harvest that I'm doing on the property, I wouldn't be able to actually do any development, I can't pull a development permit based on our code for at least two years. So that project, instead of coming up next year, it's got to be suspended for at least a couple of years. So instead of holding on to that million, I would rather use it on a project that we have in hand. So this motion is to recommend not only the bid award approval to Nick's Construction, but also the reallocation of that Oakatee Marsh funding to Whitehall, so that we can do a budget transfer in this fiscal year from the Oakatee Marsh to the Whitehall project, and then move this forward to county council next week.
Okay, open it up for questions before I ask for a motion. Anyone online have some questions about this project and the reallocations?
Mr. Somerville.
Councilman Somerville's got his hand raised, okay.
I do, too.
Okay. Councilman Somerville, go ahead, and then we'll, Councilman Glover.
I can't unmute him, I'm sorry.
Councilman Somerville, apparently you are muted. All right, let's go ahead with Councilman Glover's comments first.
Oh.
Or questions before we entertain a motion.
Come on, help remind me, where is Oakatee Marsh?
It's behind the animal shelter, off of 170.
Okay, okay. Is it the, is the, the time we are in right now, the cost has escalated this high?
I believe so, sir, yes.
That's almost, you said almost 50%?
Almost of what we anticipated. We received in 2019 an engineer's estimate of the cost, and it was just shy of a million dollars. So when we got these bids, the, the next bid was 1.6 and some change higher, or I mean, as well. So the two bids were competitive in price, so this isn't, you know, way lower than somebody else, but looking at their breakdowns, it does appear that supply chain issues, cost of electric, cost of plumbing, cost of concrete, all of that has just risen quite a bit.
The, I see the boardwalk out there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's, 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 it looks nice, I mean, for me...
It does.
Yeah, and that, that's going to be an entrance into the park.
Yes, sir.
Where is the other entrance going to be? Is, is the current road now going to be eliminated completely, or what?
Yes, the developers' plans have the existing Whitehall Drive being completely eliminated, and they're, they're installing a new right-in, right-out drive off of 21, and then there's also a road that will have a left and... And then there's also a road that will have a left and a right turn off of Meridian coming into their development. So we actually have access easements across their property and across his roads in order to get the park traffic from both of those roads into our entrance, which is on the southeast side of the property. So that's where the vehicle entrance will be. And then at the top of the property, parallel with 21, is the multi-use pathway. And so that'll be able to be used by people regardless of time of day. So folks could be at downtown, you know, after hours, and then if they wanted to walk or bike home, you know, they could come across the bridge and come across our pathway instead of staying on the road if they wanted to, if they were biking or pedestrian. So the boardwalk connects to the multi-use pathway.
Right. And the, the parking for the park is going to be inside the park, right?
Inside the park with a timed gate similar to Widgeon Point.
Or a timed gate?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. But it will not be a timed gate on the boardwalk?
No. It would be just like our, some of the other properties where pedestrians have the potential to enter at night even though the park is closed, but if they were found there by law enforcement, then they could be trespassed from the property.
Oh.
If it's after dusk.
Oh. Is that the same where they handle the downtown waterfront park?
I do not know if the waterfront park has hours. I don't think it does. It's, but it's a different type of facility.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah.
Then, Ms. Howard, this is interesting for me.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, one of the, one of the issues I've always had is access, public access, and something that the public will know, and we're going to put up signage, so that's going to be a key factor, and folks will know that this is a public park. The way it's designed has always been an issue for me because it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's a public park. It looks like a private park. And I, I just want to make sure that the public feels that they can go to this park. Now, if you make it just during the day, it's going to restrict a lot of people who maybe won't enjoy this park.
Right. And all of the passive park hours are open dawn to dusk. So, you know, usually when people are in a wooded setting at night.
Let me ask you this, then.
There's not good things happening.
Do the resident in that area have access to that park during, at night?
No, no. It'll only be open dawn to dusk to anybody, everybody.
Okay, so the resident who are living there in that development, they will not be able to get into the park?
No, sir. There's going to be fencing and the gate, so you can't drive in and you can't walk in unless you jump a fence.
You answered my question.
They won't, they won't be able to get in freely.
Yeah.
I got you.
So that, they'll be able, they might climb across the fence or do other things or go underneath the gate or whatever, but they won't be able to get in freely yet.
Okay.
Yes.
You answered my question. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You know, I had a question, too, that brought up. So if someone was renting it for a wedding, of course, those hours could be different.
Correct, yes. If they have a permit, then, and then the city of Beaufort, in our lease agreement with them, they are to maintain the event calendar, and so they actually, all, any funding for any of the events goes to the city so that they can use that for maintenance of the park.
Okay, very good.
Logan had a question.
Yes, sir. Councilman Cunningham had a question, and I think Councilman Somerville's still on mute, so go ahead, Councilman Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a quick question to refresh my own memory. First, the money that is currently in the account for Oakatee Marsh. One, question one would be, where did that money come from originally? And two, what was that original project going to be? I know we're putting it on hold because of the timber, which makes sense. Get our money to work, I'm all for it. I just wanted to refresh my own memory for that.
Sure. The funding that I have available for all these projects is from the bond referendum funding for the rural and critical bond. And so I received a pot of money, and at the time that I received that funding, county council at that time in 2018, 2019, wanted to know what it would be used for. And so through my work plan and my tier one and tier two projects, I allocated funding based on what I thought at that time projects might cost. So Oakatee Marsh became one of those with the bond funding. So the funding is a little bit flexible based on prior, shifting priorities and, and costs of things as they come, come up. And then I.
Thank you.
What was the second part of that?
What was your second part of your question, Councilman Cunningham?
Just what was the original project? Because I, I didn't remember voting on it myself, and obviously it was before I came on council, it looked like it was 2019. I was just curious what the original project idea was. I will tell you, I'll support the motion, the funding. You came up with the design originally for those funds to go. We trusted you then, I think we should trust you now.
Thank you, sir. The, the original project out there actually has yet to be determined. I do, I will maintain a small amount that I can use for a conceptual plan because I still would like to create a conceptual plan, but it would be similar to all the other passive parks with an entrance, pervious parking, picnic pavilion, trails, whether there's a kayak launch or not, whether there's other amenities, wildlife blinds or not. You know, that depends on what the public input is, is during the surveys and input sessions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Somerville, are you able to talk to us? You had your hand, no? Okay. All right, he's having difficulties with that. Any other questions before we entertain a motion to move this forward to full council? Were you, I had one question. Were you disappointed we only had two bids or, or not surprised?
I was not surprised. We had five companies attend the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and I was expecting two to three bids to come in from that. So this is kind of typical.
Just the times we live in.
Yeah. Everybody's really busy. Contractors are just swamped these days.
And then they don't have to deal with our red paper.
Exactly.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion that we move this forward? Councilman Glover?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay. I saw Council, and Councilman Glover will second that motion. So Councilman Logan Cunningham made the motion, and Councilman Glover seconded it. Without objection, we will move this forward to full council to begin more work on this project. It's my understanding the boardwalk is not open to the public yet, correct?
It is.
But it's, but it is, I've heard so many people say how nice it is.
Yes, it is not open to the public. The city reached out to me to find out if we wanted to do an opening for the boardwalk, and I told them, you could if you want, but I'm about to close it on May 1, so I don't see why it would be open for a month. So they decided to go ahead and keep it closed until the park is finished. And just as an FYI, we do have a very tight timeline on the park construction because of the nesting bald eagles. So between May and September is when the heavy work is going to be done, and then in the fall, they can do the smaller stuff like the interior work and the, and the fencing, things that don't take heavy equipment or a lot of ground, ground moving. So hopefully, early next year, we'll be able to open it.
And I forgot that, about that. That's very important. And the contractor has to, fault, will have to do that, right?
Yes.
We'll stop construct, we don't want to stop construction.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That will be a challenge.
Do the eagle still nesting at Widgeon Point?
Yes, they raised, they raised two young this year again.
Okay.
Great, great. All right, we have number 13, which is recommend approval of reappointments of Kenneth Frazier and Ford Bafallo, if I'm saying that right, to Rural and Critical Lands Preservation Board with an expiration date of 2026. And then we have number 14, which is recommend approval of the appointment of Dennis Nielsen, Nelson, Nielsen with E D D to the Beaufort County Zoning Board of Appeals for a partial term appointment with expiration date of 2024. We can do those two together. Do I have a motion to do both of those?
So moved.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Councilman Cunningham. Without objections, these will move to the full, full council at the next meeting, these appointments. All right. Anything, that is the end of our meeting. All right. Anything from staff? Are we good? All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Bravo to you, Ms. Howard.